Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in place. All right, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Bowman.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
All right, we have a quorum this evening. Thank you everybody for coming. The first item, or the fourth item already, is public participation, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience online that would like to make public comment at this time? And has anybody submitted for public comment?
Nobody submitted for public comment.
Okay, is anybody raising their hand? Okay. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent. Before we act on the consent, there are three proclamations that I would like to practice my reading skills and read out loud for you guys tonight, more so just to highlight some of the great things that we're accomplishing here in our great village. So I'll start with the proclamation for, and no offense to the Motorcycle Awareness Month, but I'm not going to read that one. Read the other three, though. All right, so the first proclamation today is Arbor Day, April 29th, 2022. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lowering our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of our community for future generations. Now therefore, as the village president of Montgomery, I do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the Village of Montgomery and dated today. And would like to then highlight and call out to trustee Guyer for spearheading our beautification efforts, but more importantly, as it relates to this, the tree dedication and giveaway that we're having. You want to give an update on that?
Yeah, on the Saturday at 10:00 AM by the silo in front of the police department, will be our Arbor Day dedication ceremony, and we will be planting a white fringe tree. And additionally, we will have approximately 50 white fringe trees potted for giveaway. So the first 50 people that are there will get a tree. And then we're also going to have on display the future plans of Arboretum Garden Park that we've been working on, so that people can look at that and see what we have envisioned for that area. It's more than just an Arbor Day park to plant trees, but it's also going to be Arboretum Garden. And that's at 10 o'clock this Saturday in front of the police department at the silo.
Perfect. It's good hard work, and it doesn't go unnoticed, especially in this room. I'm sure many of the residents don't realize that, but it's good for future generations. So I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, the second proclamation this evening is Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through 7th, 2022. Whereas the office of municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists in countries throughout the world. And whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at all other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, country, and international professional organization. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, as village president of the Village of Montgomery, I do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022, as Municipal Clerks Week in the Village of Montgomery, and further extend appreciation to our village clerk, Debbie Buchanan, our deputy clerk, Hamida Hashim, and to all municipal clerks for the vital service that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you. All right, the last one would be the proclamation for Economic Development Week, May 9th through the 13th, 2022. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is celebrating its 95th anniversary in 2022. And whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economical development organization dedicated to serving environment, I'm sorry, economic developers. And whereas the, the rails are coming off here. Whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy, advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Developer Development Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life in their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the landmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas economic developers work in the Village of Montgomery within the state of Illinois. Now therefore, as village president of the Village of Montgomery, do hereby proclaim May 9th through 13th, 2022, as Economic Development Week in the village, and commend the International Economic Development Council and its officers, staff, and members on its 95th anniversary, and recognize 2022 as the year of the economic developer. And would like to have a special shout-out to literally the only person in the audience tonight, Charlene, for all the work that you do, and also Sonya for the work that you do. You probably have more than a hand in economic development stuff from everything that you do as far as running that department. So I appreciate everything that you guys do. It's been a banner year, I think, so far this year in Montgomery, and I know that you guys have great things to come. Thank you. Okay, with that, move on to consent. Is there a motion? I could do that. Minutes of the village board meeting. I just, I just proved to you that I can read. Minutes of the village board meeting of April 11th, accounts payable through April 25th, the building report for March of 2022, proclamation for Arbor Day, proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month, proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week, and the proclamation for Economic Development Week.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes. All right, that carries, thank you. All right, item six, item for separate action. The first item here is ordinance 1963, granting a special use permit for a duplex and variations from sections 10.02(c) parking standards, also driveway width, residential driveways of the UDO, and this is second reading. You guys discussed it at the last meeting. Unless somebody else has something to add, or Director App, do you have anything new?
No new change, no changes.
Since the last meeting? Does anybody have any unanswered questions?
Just want to put on the record again, there could be a potential conflict of interest, so I will abstain from voting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Okay.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes. All right, that carries with four yes votes. Which will go down as five yes votes. Okay, moving on to item B this evening is ordinance 1962, granting a special use permit for a cannabis dispensary. The applicant was World of Weed at 1970 Caterpillar Drive. This is second reading. Staff have anything additional?
Nothing additional from the last meeting.
Perfect. Any comments, questions?
Want a motion?
I would like a motion.
Right.
Yeah, I was just going to say, as I look at the findings of fact, again, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with everything that the plan commission has presented to us. So again, just putting that on record, that the first three items under the findings of fact, I don't completely agree that there's not going to be any type of harm or disruption or things along those lines. So I just wanted to say that publicly, and I won't be voting yes on this for that reason.
I appreciate the heads up. What I can appreciate is that, you know, we kind of had that forethought to put this type of a special use in the ordinance long before it became an actual applicant, right? So we were able to kind of kick things around and see how we could or would regulate this locally. I guess on the flip side of that, one of, some of my questions, concerns were at the state law, we're actually more governed by state law on sales that, where the sale can happen, lines, this and that, and it generally needs to be contained inside the building. There won't be, you know, any sort of external pressures on this thing, which was really important to me as somebody who frequents that area literally probably every day. I have been passed other facilities too, especially the ones that are in newer retail areas. You can't even tell they're there, honestly. People go in, people come out. They, they're required to provide their own security and that kind of thing, so. But I appreciate your opinion on that. Does anybody else have thoughts or opinions? Don't?
Would you like a motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve. Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
No.
Trustee Bowman.
No.
Trustee Youngerman.
My parents would be shocked that I vote yes on this, but I'm voting yes.
And that carries three, too. Thank you. All right, moving on to item C, ordinance 1964, amending water regulation in and out of the Village of Montgomery, Kane and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
Oddly enough, I'll be taking you through this. So with a lot of the changes in our policies, as well as our transition over to Lake Michigan water and the DuPage Water Commission, there's been several changes to our ordinance that need to happen. Some of these are related to codifying for the monthly billing changes that we went through. Others are trying to incorporate more conservation methods that need to be codified to help with our application for the Lake Michigan allocation. Other ones are related to stating what we as the Public Works Department are responsible for with maintaining the water system. Some of them are sort of cleanup, codifying different policies or practices that we've had into place, some of those including having an exterior entrance for any water meter so that the village has access to that water meter directly from outside. Additionally, dealing with non-conforming water services for those instances where a building doesn't have a separate water service for each tenant or unit that's within the building, providing an option for them to be able to have individual remote meters for each of those units, so the village isn't forced to turn off water to an entire building if there is any issue with payments. Additionally, we're adopting new cross-connection backflow prevention regulations. This is following IEPA standards, so we're adopting their sample ordinance incorporating it to ours. And additionally, we've got specifying that any costs related to joining the DuPage Water Commission, any of those capital costs can be evaluated as part of any rate increase on an annual basis. So those are kind of the different things that are incorporated into this update for you. I did provide you with a redline version so that you could see some of the changes from old language to new language. All of staff really worked on this, so we're happy to answer any questions that you have. I know trustee Guyer had called me with a few issues that I think we'll be able to take care of tonight with some small modifications. If he wants to bring those up, I can share those as well.
Okay. Yeah, under section 20-5, discharge of pollutants in a stormwater drainage system prohibited and penalty. It doesn't really address actual dumping, it address is being connected. And that was my question is, can we amend this where addresses if somebody physically dumped something into the sewer or into the curb line and it runs into the storm sewer?
Right, and generally, we thought that this would cover that as well, but it doesn't hurt to add a little extra in there. So, and talking with engineer Wallers, we came up with a new B, and then B would become C, and that would be it shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to discharge any polluting substances directly into any stormwater drainage system or appurtenances within the village limits.
Okay. Oh, you have more?
Yeah, I've got.
All right, sorry. I was just going to state, I can distinctly remember the first time we ever talked about water sense in this room. Do you remember that? With Stan Bond, and I think you referenced Richard Nixon and all kinds of things. It was awesome.
Under section 20-39, changes of residence. It talks about, we want to establish a water service for somebody if they owe a water bill at a previous location. And my question was, what if they owe for other things like fines or fees? We want to address that in this section also, or does that cover somewhere else?
We do say that we can add those fines to an outstanding bill, and in practice, we have actually been ensuring that the entire water bill, even if it includes fines, has been paid off before we're opening up a new water account. So, but we can certainly add just a blurb thereafter, water rental, saying or other charges is outlined in section 20-50F, which is the section that talks about the additional charges that can be added to, to water bills.
Okay, perfect. I've just dealt with this for 20 years. I know everybody tries to get around all the issues and want to turn off their water. So on page 12, I'm not sure what section, but there's, this says, no property will be allowed to use water for lawn sprinkling on July 31st and August 31st of the calendar year. And if you could just clarify that for everybody, why those specific two days?
Since that's a time of year where we really are trying to limit water use in case of drought, in those instances, the 31st and the 31st of those two months are odd days, so you would have odd-numbered houses being able to water two days in a row. So I think it eliminates that particular unfairness by eliminating those dates from being a watering date.
Okay, good.
That'll be fun to enforce, by the way.
People are going to be calling now.
Right. Under section 20-47, where it talks about water meters being inaccurate at 4%, and it says the village will recalibrate, replace, and will pay the cost, then right after that says, above charges for removal, repair, and replacement, we charge regardless of whether the village or property owner, or the removal, repair, or replacement of the meter.
Yes, Director Van Vorn and I dove deep on that one, and it seems we have some legacy language that was not deleted in its entirety at a certain point, so that last sentence can be deleted. It has been our practice that when a water meter fails, that the village pays to replace that meter. So regardless of who called or noticed, so.
Okay. And then at the bottom of the page, where it talks about private exterior fire loops, and in the verb, it just says that the, the, it'll be installed in above heated enclosure. And my question on that is whether, if it was going to be monitored in case there was a loss of heat, and then you said that that would be, would be provided in the village's specifications when we, when they submit that part of the process.
So yeah, as they submit, and we review those, those plans, that's going to be something that in coordination with the fire department, we're making sure is addressed.
Okay, perfect. That's all I had. Thank you.
So initially, I was going to ask this question, that in addition to the tap fee, we show a fire suppression service tap fee of half, but that was always policy.
That was always policy.
This wasn't in the table.
We're just adding it to make the math a little bit easier for people, rather than them calling and asking what half of the price is, we can just point to the table and it's, it's in there.
Yep. Good. Sounds great. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
He cleared the motion to approve is including the three items that we just went over.
Second.
Isn't this first reading?
It is first reading, so we don't have to act on it. But if you want to act on it, it's ready. So I'm fine.
They act on it tonight?
Yeah, yeah. Unless you want to talk about it again.
No. I'm talked out.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And that's to include your three edits.
Correct.
Or clarifications.
Correct.
All right, and then when staff's done, will you send us the final version so we have it? All right, go ahead.
Okay, trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes. That carries 5-0, thank you. Thanks everyone. All right, item D, ordinance 1965, amending code 9.5-1 of the village code pertaining to the establishment of the HPC.
Yes, the village code currently allows the Preservation Commission to elect a chair to serve until the end of their current term as a commissioner. The commission met last, well, actually, no, we met in March, and they suggested changing it to a two-year term, so they asked the board to consider that text amendment. So the language you have before you states that the members shall elect from themselves a chair and vice chair to serve a two-year term or until the end of their respective terms, whichever is earlier. And they serve three-year term, three-year terms.
HPC is on board with this.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The HPC wants to do this, right? You're on board with this change?
Yes, we have a chair. I didn't know we discussed a vice chair. We don't, we didn't choose a vice chair.
Well, in the code, it says there's a vice chair, so just do apply to both.
But yes, we, we wanted to provide for changing the leadership every couple of years like the plan commission does.
Sure, okay.
So moved.
Again, this is first reading, but we can pass it tonight if you're ready. So there's been a motion.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. That's trustee Bowman.
Yes. Okay, that carries 5-0, thank you. All right. Item E is Resolution 2022-007, authorizing the execution of an agreement for the enforcement of private property parking regulations at 400 US Route 30, Farm and Fleet.
Yes, so Farm and Fleet has approached the village about entering into a private property parking agreement with the village. They've been receiving numerous complaints regarding overnight parking of trucks on their property and would like us to use this agreement to aid in deterring this practice. The agreement is in general compliance with our standards, and the village's police department has already reviewed and approved the agreement. This is approved, it'll be recorded with the Kendall County Recorder's Office, and then we will be able to start enforcing.
Cool.
So moved.
Second.
No question.
Go ahead.
What would the chief, the manner of enforcement be? Is there kind of like a first warning, second warning, or just an automatic ticket issued to any truck found there overnight?
Well, it all depends. Currently, they do have the ability to remove vehicles themselves being private property. We are there to assist them if it is a compulsory-type act on our part. We have certain rules we have to follow because it's private property, like a seven-day notice. And we've spoken to them about this, and we'll take action if they have repeat offenders. So the first one probably would be just to assist them in removing it with a warning, going over there and just using the authority of a police firm, saying please comply. If they didn't, then we'd go with the compulsory movement to have them dump.
It's been obvious, the amount of trucks that have been increasing over the last several months, is there anywhere else in the village that this was becoming problematic, or is that really the only location?
Well, we've touched upon this in several different locations. In front of U-Haul, on the Douglas, we talked to U-Haul, helped them work through that. It just seems in that area right there, they had no place else to park, so they started parking their lot. Because it was large, they could easily maneuver their trucks there. So it's an issue that, is there a place for them to go? Not on that side of town. You know about behind Caterpillar, that's where they've been parking a lot of the short-term parking for tractor-trailers. We're hoping everybody gets that, we're going to tell them that's available to them. So we're hoping for compliance instead of having to do the compulsory.
Thank you. And we have this type of agreement in a couple of different locations in town, right? Okay, any further discussion or questions? All right, call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes. That carries 5-0, thank you. All right, item F, Resolution 2022-008, approving an MOU between the state of Illinois, DNR, and the Village of Montgomery to study for the Montgomery Dam Removal Modification Project. Engineer Wallers.
So this is a follow-up item. You may recall back in July, we talked about the possibility of doing a study, and the next step was for the state of Illinois to develop the Memorandum of Understanding, which would illustrate the items that would be included in the study and the responsibilities that, who it would fall to. This agreement's been reviewed with the village attorney, and our changes were sent back to IDNR. They reviewed them, accepted them. So this is the final version, which we believe can be approved. You'll notice that most of the language is, is pretty collaborative. It's not a necessarily requirement, things that it gives us the option to do them. So as we progress through the study, there may be things that we want to do, and if there are things that are going to be a monetary cost to us, we'll come back to the board and discuss that. But right now, this would be what is required to initiate the, the study and get DNR working on it. And, you know, there's going to be, if we get through the study, then there'll be a decision to be made as to how we want to proceed once we go through the study.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd just like to say one thing. When we talked about this previously, I am not in favor of removing the dam, but I said I was in favor of the study. And I do see in the study that it says that there's identified multiple proposed dam removal alternatives, including the associated benefits and costs. So, yeah, I will vote for the study, but I would like us to really consider alternatives to removing the dam. I think it brings a lot of people to the village, it's been here for quite a few years, and it's, it's just a nice, a nice area. I come by here on the weekends and just the amount of people that are in that area fishing and, and just, you know, being around the dam is, I like, I like the idea of having the dam in town. I think it sets us apart, and it does pull a lot of people into town.
Yeah, and I think just to highlight that this is more of a collab, it will be a collaborative effort with IDNR. When we first met with them, too, that one of their biggest points was that, you know, their, their task with removing the dams, right? They own the dam, that's their task. They don't have funding to remove all of them currently, so they want to spend their money where they're wanted, which is part of the reason why we, we are seeking approval of this, is to highlight to them, hey, we want you in town, we'd rather study this with you together than without, than have you study it without us. But I think that's one of my focal points, too, is if we, if there's a way that we can accomplish their goal of safety and fish passage, and at the same time, have some sort of recreational benefit, either the channel or whatnot, that's my goal.
I would really like to see that dead-end finger resolved. That's always been a, been a problem, where the water is just stagnant down there. It'd be nice if we could come up with an alternative to make that as a bypass to the dam, and then people could utilize that to, to navigate the river downstream and around the dam.
Definitely. Anything else?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes. 5-0, thank you. All right, item G this evening is PSA for the Boulder Hill District Metering Improvements. Mark?
Thank you, President Prowley. So as the village board is aware, the village is moving towards our alternate water source, Lake Michigan water in the year 2030. As part of that, through our IDNR allocation process, the village is required to bring our water reduction, our non-revenue water reduction underneath 10%. So as part of our non-revenue water reduction plan, the village would like to move forward with So, as part of our non-revenue water reduction plan, the village would like to move forward with establishing three district metering stations that basically feed the Boulder Hill subdivision, which is the unincorporated area that the village serves with water. This area is, has concerns of being problematic as far as a lot of our non-revenue water loss. And therefore, this will be a good way for us to be able to take the information for, from those three metering stations, along with the final reads in the businesses and homes throughout the Boulder Hill area, and be able to do a comparison that'll help us establish our, our water main replacement program that we're going to talk about here shortly. So, I'm happy to answer any questions at the time. Otherwise, the staff is recommending approval for E, this PSA for EEI of forty-seven thousand dollars, which would be out of fiscal year twenty-three budget and falls under that budgeted amount. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I do have one question. The, the three meter locations, the one on Route twenty-five and the one on Briar Cliff, I know are not an issue as far as service lines prior to that meter vault of unincorporated properties. But how about the one on merchants prior to that vault? Is there, I'm not sure if McDonald's comes off of that line prior or if it's after?
So, that'll be part of the study that will, that EEI will go through, is we'll go through a phase where we'll identify all the service line locations and figure out the, the strategic place to put that metering station so we incorporate all of those, those properties.
Okay, perfect, yep.
Perfect.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further comments? Okay.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Carries five zero, thank you. Alright, the only item for discussion today is a draft five-year water main replacement program. Presentation by engineer Wallers.
I thought we were done with water dispatches for at least a couple of months.
Just the beginning.
It's a thin one, I like it.
Yeah, that's the, that's till, that takes us till the potty break.
I was a little excited about this one. And then he brings me a stapled packet, so.
Okay. So, this is going to be a bit of a combination of a number of topics. It's going to include the five-year plan, but it's also going to address some other things. First, we're going to start out with some program updates. There's been quite a bit of work that's been done already on the alternate water supply program. So, we want to just bring the board up to speed on that. And I think going forward, we'll coordinate with Administrator Zoful, but I think probably every two months or so, we'll probably be coming back just to give you updates on what's happening, because there's just a lot of, as you'll see in a minute, there's a lot of things that are just ongoing. Non-revenue water reduction is going to be a big topic over the next eight years until 2030 and even beyond, because we're obligated to maintain our discipline of, of reducing our non-revenue water. And a big part of the non-revenue water is going to be water main replacement program, so I want to talk a little bit about that. And then there's a policy discussion that we need to initiate tonight, and we can have some dialogue on that and then decide how best to proceed. So, some of the activities that have been going on, which I know some, you, some of you are already aware of, but the Lake Michigan Water Supply Allocation Permit has been submitted to IDNR, so that's, that work has been done. We'll be having a hearing, a preliminary hearing, hasn't been scheduled yet, but we'll certainly let everyone know when that is. And, and then if there'll be a formal hearing following that, so that's in progress. It'll take some time, probably take twelve months to process the permit, I would suspect. The water supply agreement with the Page Water Commission, or DWC, is in progress. The IGA with Oswego Yorkville is also in progress, so there's, you know, two things. We're buying, we're, we're getting an allocation permit from DNR, which allows us to get Lake Michigan water. DWC buys water from City of Chicago and then pumps it out to the suburbs. And so, we'll have an agreement with DWC to furnish us water, but our allocation goes to the IDNR. And every community in DWC has their own allocation permit, so, and that's, that's typical. We have, the non-revenue water reduction program is already in progress. So, elements of that, and we'll get into the details, but for example, the village has been doing meter, residential meter replacements for the last several years. That's a big part of our program. We've been doing water main replacements for some time, but now we're formally going to say that our water main replacements are part of our non-revenue reduction plan. So, really, the first official water main that would be part of the, the non-revenue water will be the River Street Water Main, which will be happening in fall. And then the district metering is part of non-revenue water reduction. So, there's just a lot of things that'll come into that, and as I say a little bit later, I will get into that. We did submit for four different, well, four, we made four submittals and for congressional grants through Senator Duckworth and Durbin's office, and then also Representative Underwood and Representative Foster. So, those were submitted on behalf of the village. In order to make those applications, we had to generate a, our five-year plan, I would say, a little bit ahead of our, our schedule. So, that's the reason we're going to talk about it tonight, more of a preliminary nature. We'll be coming back to you with a more formal presentation on the five-year plan. But we thought this is probably a good opportunity to give you an update, talk about it in general, and then, you know, kind of move forward from there, so. And then there was also a draft water system improvement plan that was included with the IDNR submittal. Those plans, the water reduction plan is going to be reviewed annually and we'll make updates to it, kind of like we do with our pavement management program, where we adopt a plan, but then we take stock in it every year and make changes that are needed. And we expect that, you know, we've got a certain amount of money earmarked for the non-revenue water. We hope that we won't have to spend it all, but it's going to really reflect on how well our program works in reducing non-revenue water loss. So, get into that a bit here tonight. Most of you are, again, I know a lot of this is redundant for you, but just to reiterate that, in order to get a Lake Michigan permit, we have to have non-revenue water less than ten percent. So, that's the standard that has been adopted by DNR, and that's what we're going to work towards. In the submittal that we made to DNR, we budgeted thirty-four point two million dollars for our non-revenue water reduction plan. That was what was included in the program that was, that the village, when they reviewed all the different alternatives, so it was included with that program. Of the thirty-four million, about twenty-four million would be targeted, right now is targeted for water main replacements. Approximately fifteen million in the unincorporated regions, which obviously include Boulder Hill, but they also include like countryside subdivision. And then about nine million in incorporated Montgomery. Now, those could move around a little bit. Again, we'll be coming back annually to talk about things like that. And then, again, the non-revenue water just needs to be below ten percent in 2030. So, our, our efforts are geared to the 2030 transfer when we, when we switch supplies. So, some of the initiatives that have been started and already have been done, and things that we will eventually get to. For example, it's recommended that we'll have a water loss team with a champion and have quarterly meetings. That'll likely be a staff committee that would be doing that. We'll have to do, continually do our annual audits. Now, we're already doing those, so that's not a huge change for the village. And we switched some years ago to the water year that the DNR is on, so that we would be in, in, in conjunction with them. So, that's good. And then we'll have to continue monitoring, you know, our progress on an annual basis as well. As we noted, a big part of things, you know, is making sure anything that's unbilled, we can't really have any more unbilled or unmeasured water. So, for example, if, at Village Hall, if we don't send ourselves a bill, that counts against us as non-revenue water. So, through Director Ben Voren's help, you know, we're going to make sure that all the accounts, even if they're, you know, zero-dollar exchanged, if you will, we still have a billing system and an accounting for them. We've got the meter changeout that'll continue, and also, not only do we have all of our residential commercial meters, we have all our master meters that have to balance as well. So, those, those have to be done annually tested so that we don't have any what are called not real losses, but apparent losses. So, in other words, it, if it's just in a, it's more of an accounting error, but it still counts against us. So, we want to keep up on all that stuff. Something that the village has been good about in, in past years is continually do a annual leak detection program. One of the things we'll probably start looking at is possibly doing more frequent leak detection, but maybe more targeted leak detection. And I know trustee Guyer has, has mentioned, you know, that there are systems out there where you can have acoustic monitors in the system itself, and we're going to be looking at all that. We're not, we haven't settled on any recommendations, but we'll be coming back with that in the, in the future. We have budgeted some money for that type of a program, and we'll see how it fits once we get through all of our research. But the, the main point is, and it was, I think, fairly well illustrated a few years ago when we had the several breaks on River Street, and because we have sand and gravel, and it's close to the river, none of those leaks surfaced, so they were running for quite some time before we really knew it. So, we lost a lot of water in that period, so we're going to want to try to reduce that over time. We'll continue with our main break analysis. We've been tracking main breaks for over forty years in the village, so we have a real good database on what's happening. And that is going to continue, and we just hope to refine it as we go forward by adding some additional criteria for our analysis. Generally, duct lined pipe has a hundred-year lifespan. So, on an average, you would say we'd probably replace one percent of our pipe per year to keep up with that hundred-year lifespan. So, over the course of a hundred years, all the pipe would be replaced. However, there's going to be some times when we're going to need to do more, and maybe sometimes we need to do less. Initially, you know, it was an average of about three million dollars a year. That's going to get refined a little bit. We feel like we need to do some jump-starting of the program in Boulder Hill, talk a little bit about that. But again, we'll kind of bring it back together. The first program replacement would be the River, the River Street Water Main. This is a, what's called a heat map, and it illustrates where we see main breaks in the village by area. And what you can see is, you know, the Boulder Hill area is, is pretty peppered with main breaks over, that we've identified. But you can also see, and if, if you look at kind of the north there, the River Street section, a lot of main breaks along there as well. And then, as you might expect, kind of the older part of town, so you get over to the east in Parkview Estates and Marbury Manor, we're seeing quite a few breaks. And then the countryside subdivision, as I mentioned as well, which is on the west. And we'll get into some of the criteria, but you have to also try to, to work with the townships to make sure that we're hopefully doing work that corresponds to the best of our ability with the road programs that are out there. If we look closer to the Boulder Hill area, I think you now can get a sense of why we think having those district meters on the Boulder area makes some sense. We just have a lot of main breaks out there. It's an area where we have, most of the, the main in the village is, is newer, because of our growth was primarily after nineteen ninety-eight. And so, there's a lot of pipe in Boulder Hill that is, is not lined, which is a bit unusual. But for the time it went in, it's not, it's not unprecedented, I would say. But the fact is, we see that we have, most of our breaks are on unlined pipe water main areas. So, that'll, that kind of helps us target which ones we should be replacing in the future, so. So, a little bit about some of the summary of the water reduction plan, and we'll probably come back and get into this a little more detail. But again, tonight, I just wanted to kind of get a broad overview of where we're at, give you an idea of some of the things that are underway. And then, you know, we'll come back and kind of get into this a little bit further. But as I said, and I kind of repeat myself a little bit here, we got the metering that we want to concentrate on. The customer meter replacement's very important, and I think going to monthly billing, quite honestly, is a great move, and I think it'll be, and then with the system that Mark and Justin have put together, you know, I think it's going to be a big advantage for the village. The district metering, we believe, will be an important project, because we'll have a better feel for exactly how much water we're losing in Boulder Hill. And then we may decide to either put more resources there or less, you know, depending. And if, if that doesn't have as much water loss as we think, then we'll likely go to other locations in the village and do some district metering. So, that's the things that will be coming back to you for discussion. We're going to be bringing forward, again, a little more disciplined approach, but a, a document that'll, kind of a similar approach that we do with pavement management, where we're going to have a water distribution system management plan, where we identify the five-year plan. We set up a, a grading system for our water mains, and we use that, just like we do for the road program, to try to give us the most efficient use of our funds to try to replace those main, those mains where we think we have the most leakage. And so, we talked a little bit about some sort of a continual leak management system, whether it's acoustical or other, or in, you know, in-system meters, we're not sure yet. We'll be talking a lot more about financing, but one of the elements will certainly be an IEP A low-interest loan. And for that, we'll have to generate a project plan, which is similar to what we did for the lead service line and for other water improvements in the pla, in the past. And then I had mentioned that, you know, future district metering as, as needed. The goal then is to take that, you know, non-revenue water, which we're at about twenty-nine percent plus or minus. It varies a little bit per year, but over the, you know, the basic time from 2022 to 2030, we would get that back down below ten percent. So, that's our goal going forward. So, the preliminary water main program that was put together was done, I think, consistent with how we'll do the formal one. But again, we put it together to respond to the grant applications that we made. But what do we take into account for deciding what mains to do? We have, of course, the break history, and we break it down over the, the life of the data that we have, which is forty-three years. We also look at the last twenty years, and then we look at the last five years. So, we try to find out if there's any hotspots that are coming up where we're seeing rapid deterioration. We look at pipe material, as I said, you know, we know for a fact that the unlined cast iron has been giving us the most problems. So, that's likely going to be, you know, a big part of what we select. The age of pipe comes into play. Obviously, the older it is, the closer it gets to design life. Now, keep in mind that just because a pipe is sixty or seventy years old, doesn't mean we're automatically going to replace it, because it's still got thirty years, at least thirty years more of design life. So, you hate to just sort of give up on that design life. So, it's a balancing act, but it, it's, it's a, certainly a condition that we'd look at, but it may not be the deciding factor. Geographic location, just like the road program, we're going to want to cluster things geographically so we can be more efficient in our construction and disruptions. Talking with the townships on the pending road conditions in the road programs in the unincorporated areas, and then, of course, our own road program here. And then hydraulic consideration. So, there might be like an eight-inch water main that we notice has, is a limitation to fire flow in a certain area that we may want to move up ahead to get the benefit of having a twelve-inch pipe or a sixteen-inch pipe in that location. So, all those things go into the criteria for the replacement and our scoring system. So, as I already said, you know, we're, we're kind of, it's a draft plan right now. It's under review. We'll be coming back to you with a formal submittal on it. But again, just wanted to get it out there so that you know it's coming. This is the plan that was developed. We intentionally removed the road names from there, because I didn't want it to go into the paper, because it isn't final, and we don't want people to look down the list to see what their, when their road is going to get done. So, until we can bring it back, this is definitely preliminary, and we will bring it back to you all for consideration and final approval. So, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but it, just to let you know that we went through this again to be able to make a, a good grant applications that, you know, we're trying to seek. Again, I know this is stuff you know, but just to reiterate that, you know, the cost of our alternate water supply transfer plan is going to be roughly, you know, a hundred million dollars or so in 2020 dollars. We're committed to spend the thirty We're committed to spend the 34 million right now in the non-revenue reduction plan. 15 million for the unincorporated and nine for the incorporated areas can vary as we go through. And I would say that, you know, we'll never stop replacing water main, even after we get through the surge because we'll have to continue to maintain our system. So it's not like we're going to be done at any point. And it's, it's like that with everything that we have in the village. Funding sources, as you can expect for a hundred million dollar project, it's going to be a complex funding strategy. I've listed the ones that we'll be looking at. And of course, we'll be using whatever cash on hand from the water fund reserves or revenues. Conventional bonds, state revolving loan fund. There's a program out there called the W F I A and that's a, a large scale, you know, projects nominally a hundred million dollars would be eligible for, can fund up to 49% of a project. Good interest rate and a long payback here. It's like 30 year payback. So the low interest loan program is 20, W F I A is 30. We're looking at possible coordination with other communities to do a joint applications on W F I A and that's all in progress and we'll report back to you on that. Certainly, we're trying to get whatever grants we can get. Again, we've made some applications already. And then D W C has indicated that there may be some funding that they would provide for the joint pipeline for the three communities. So that'll be sorted out. So it's going to take a little time to get the funding set up. So the initial, some of the initial water main replacements will be done out of the revenues that we have at the village. And then as we continue forward, we'll have to start bringing in these other funding sources. From a policy perspective, one of the things we're going to have to decide is, you know, how do we, how do we reconcile all these costs? Well, right now, just to put things in perspective, we have both incorporated and unincorporated customers, right? And we do, when we did the last water rate study, we did a calculation of the cost for the village to provide water for the unincorporated versus the incorporated. And that's the reason why right now the water rate is for the unincorporated is 1.2 times higher than the incorporated. Because that represents what we believe is a fair assessment of the extra costs for doing work outside the village. That's been that way for a long time. I don't remember exactly when that was passed, but it's been quite a while, over 10 years, I believe. So that's just by way of, you know, sometimes I hear that, you know, that Boulder Hill is being charged, you know, two times. That's not true. So it's 1.2. Now, something that did happen when we had, and you may recall this, you know, some time ago, and I can't remember the exact year, but we did a fairly large targeted replacement program in Boulder Hill. We had an area in the southwest quadrant of Boulder Hill where we had some horrendous water quality issues and we had huge problems with main breaks. And we did a replacement program there and then that was put on as a surcharge to the Boulder Hill specific customers. As we now move forward with this non-revenue water reduction plan, how are we going to go forward? Are we going to just decide that it's time to start sharing these costs equally across all of our ratepayers? Or are we going to try to do something else? And so that's where it gets into the policy realm. We can calculate whatever you need us to calculate, but we'd like to get, initiate the discussion. We don't have to finalize this tonight, but we'd like to at least initiate the discussion on how to handle that so we know going forward.
Just to clarify, engineer Oz, when you talk about kind of keeping everything equal, still talking about keeping the rate at 1.2 times, but there wouldn't be any additional surcharges possibly?
That would be our recommendation because I think, again, we, and we would recommend the next time that we do a water rate study, we go through the same process and evaluate the two, unincorporated, incorporated and make sure that that's still the number. But yes, I would suggest that we keep that because it's, it's, makes sense. And then, you know, the, whether or not the targeted extra cost is put on there or not is, you know, something I think needs to be discussed.
So, sorry, just a couple of things. I do have like four pretty specific questions with the presentation, but just to jump on this first is, I know you and I have had a bunch of conversations about this over the years. And, and I'll put out there that, you know, I firmly believe that the Boulder Hill residents who live there today, many of them are probably likely not the buyers who bought 70 years ago. They've been paying at least 1.2 times. I believe it, I would assume that it was much more than that initially, but I don't have the data to back that up. And they are fully vested in our system at this point. So when we go in and do this holistic change, we're not charging back when there's a water main break in Orchard Prairie North. We're not charging that back just to that subdivision. They just happen to be the third largest unincorporated subdivision in the country. So I'm going to put that out there, but then I do have three specific questions, but I bet you wanted to jump on that first part. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, to answer the last bullet point, moving forward, should the N R W reduction program costs be shared equally with all ratepayers? Absolutely not. I sit in the Montgomery Village trustee seat and I've been elected to represent the Montgomery taxpayers. And so the Montgomery taxpayers pay taxes to Montgomery. Boulder Hill does not. Now, does that mean that we don't do everything that we can to solve the water loss issues in Boulder Hill? No, I think we should do everything that we possibly can. But if there is a, what's the word I'm looking for? If there's a water main break in Orchard Prairie North, those costs need to be bore by the village of Montgomery. If there's a water main break in Boulder Hill, those costs need to be bore by Boulder Hill. I'll be the bad guy. But, and, and here's part of it, when I went to that neighborhood watch meeting, and I think the, the past major water main replacement, there was a specific charge, I want to say $15 if I'm, if I remember correctly. How can the Boulder Hill residents bear the, the cost of additional water main replacement? If I think we did 11 or 12% and it was a 15, it was a $15 charge, you know, to, to pay for those bonds and things. It's, it's not the residents, the taxpaying residents of the village of Montgomery's fault that the infrastructure in Boulder Hill, as far as the water and that, is deteriorating. That's not, that's not, that's not a cost that I will ever vote to pass on to the village of Montgomery residents.
So I just, I'm going to argue with you on it just a little bit, a couple of things. Take off your, your village and taxpayer hat and put on your water utility hat. Because it's not, there's no village taxes that go to fund any of the water programs. So now you're a water utility board, let's say. And unless we're willing to carve out our whole town into individual subdivisions, then we can't, we can't continue to pass that along to just one subdivision unless you want to do it to Orchard Prairie North and Blackberry Crossing West and.
We're not, if, if there's a, if there's a water main break in Teresa's subdivision or Matt's or Dan's or whoever, we're village of Montgomery. We're going to, that's a cost that I've, as my, as I'm a taxpayer and I pay to the village, that's a cost that is.
No taxpayer funds.
It has nothing to do with taxes.
A consumer perspective, right? So the, the village of Montgomery has at some point beyond my, I don't know the history, decided to sell or provide water to, to residents for a specific price. That includes delivery of that water as well and it needs to provide for that system to get there. If there's a flaw in that system, then whatever the rate was that was being recouped for that water needs to be able to be reassessed for, for the, the system that that water flows through. It's not about who, who pays taxes or where, that they're paying for that water. The water's not free. So the, the way to get that water from, from the core, from, from the well, from the, the system to the house falls on who they're buying the water from, which is us. It has nothing to do with our property taxes and where the taxes are coming from. It's a, we, we are selling a commodity to somebody. We're selling water. So then we, we decided to sell that water. Now it's our responsibility to get that water to them.
So, okay, so I look at it this way then. All right, if I'm a user, water user in Montgomery and I'm a village resident and I have relatively new infrastructure, which my taxes have paid for the infrastructure, right? For the, for the water mains and stuff, it was all, it was all through water?
Water bonds or the water rate. It's all water.
Or the developer put it in.
The developer.
Water is a completely separate issue. It's got nothing to do with taxes.
Why would I, and I'm looking for the numbers here.
And if I, if you're going where I think you're going, that means as somebody who lives on the west side of town, which is a newer section of town, I shouldn't be concerned with paying for replacing water main that's here downtown and down on River Street.
You're village of Montgomery.
Same concept of I'm not going to pay for a library.
And again, I think the dividing thing, Steve, is that you're viewing everything as the village of Montgomery and the village of Montgomery's water system is a completely separate entity. It charges its own money. It generates its own revenues, its, its own costs, those employees are segregated. It's not part of our tax base. It's part of a service we provide to all of the water users in the system.
The water revenues, okay, then let me ask a different question and this is going to be a tough question. The water revenues that we've received over the time that we've provided, whether it be, you have village of Montgomery that's received, they're paying a dollar for whatever for water. And you've got Boulder Hill that's paid a dollar 20 for water. These costs or these charges that we've recouped, have they gone into a fund specifically for this? What, what fund do they go into?
They go into the water fund. And they're not segregated when they come in that this is money we got from Boulder Hill or unincorporated areas. This is money we got from the village and we spend this here and this here.
Why wouldn't it be?
Because it's water system money. We have to maintain the entire system.
The idea of the out of town rate is, and you correct me if I'm overstepping here. The out of town rate is not set up for like future water main replacements of just Boulder Hill, right? You've bought in, you're, you're in a utility user, right? You're a user. The 20% covers our cost to do work outside of the village. Whatever the heck that might be, you guys can list off, but it wasn't for fixing water main. And the, the bigger picture thing and not nitpicking on, you know, government stuff that probably nobody else cares about except us is, in my opinion, I grew up in Boulder Hill, is 70 years ago, water main went in. That is not of the same standard that we would use today. We would never have approved it. Nobody in this room had anything to do with it, but it happened and it's our job as the entire village to solve that. It really is. We will not and cannot put that on just Boulder Hill people, residents who didn't live here then, who didn't build it, who didn't put in the inferior water main, had nothing to do with it and they just bought a house. And frankly, they, I don't think they could support what we would need to charge them if we did it that way.
I don't think the residents of Montgomery can support.
Support, but again, I go back to support what? It's supporting the water system. Our system is the entire system. It's not Orchard Prairie North, Lakewood Creek, River Street. It's the water system and Boulder Hill is in part of our water system.
I see it as village of Montgomery and Boulder Hill. That's how I see it.
And you can, when it comes to garbage pickup and utilities and things, but water is an entire system. And they are included in our system and have been inherently since the inception. So to now decide that, well, it's going to cost more money to fix that, you know, why am I going to pay for River Street? I live out on the west side. I have a brand new water main. I don't want to pay for it. Why am I going to pay for that? They're still part of our water system.
Boulder Hill wasn't part of it since, since its inception.
Am I incorrect in that?
We've always supplied water to Boulder Hill.
Yeah.
I thought Boulder Hill tapped in in what, the seventies or something?
When it was built. When it was built, it tapped in.
Oh, the village agreed to sell water to that whole subdivision and didn't, for whatever reason, we should, we're not going to go 70 years ago, but yeah, it was always built that way.
Then why wouldn't they kept track of Boulder Hill and Montgomery?
Because they're part of our system. You're, you're drawing a line where there is no line. They're, they are part of us.
And the water flows both ways. You can't relate at any rate.
Well, so kind of put in perspective, it's just like when you look at your comm ed bill and you have an infrastructure fee or whatever, infrastructure repair fee, they don't say, well, the west side of Montgomery has got newer lines and everything is buried and we have less costs out there, so we're going to charge those people this infrastructure fee. But the people in Old Town, they have wires in the air and the wind blows and they're constantly, you know, falling because trees are hitting them or a car hits a pole, we're going to charge them a higher. They spread it out. Everybody pays the same fee. I, I understand what you're saying. And part of the problem is, is it's kind of like with our, our road program, it's like anything else. It had, should have been, there should have been a program all along for water main replacement. And it's always tough to get something kickstart, just like the roads. You know, we had roads that were in bad shape. We started this, this project and I don't want to get involved in that big conversation, but you know, with the taxes and stuff. I mean, you go to the store in Montgomery and you pay the same tax rate for what you're purchasing to replace the roads and you have a brand new road that won't be replaced in 10 years, but somebody on the other side of town is going to get a new road next year. You know, you could argue, well, that's really not fair. It's a whole different, you know, it's taxes, but it, it's just a way it's set up. It's, at some point in time, you got to start.
In a bigger picture, that's like chapter one of why, why we have cities, right? We pull our, and the big thing is, this Joliet kind of did this with their, with their project was the all for one model. It's, it's actually, you'll be thanking us, we did this in 50 years when you still live in that same house and your water main needs to be replaced and they're not charging you for it because it's all in the system. We're in this together all for one. The one thing I wanted to say too about your comment about Montgomery, you know, versus Boulder Hill, I've never seen it that way. And I don't, I think it's important for us as this board to embrace Boulder Hill and any issues that we can help solve in the area. I think that's better for the entire region than isolate any issues that, you know, and the only aspect that we have is water. But I think we need to embrace, embrace the, the problem and solve it.
It's going to be a hard sell to Montgomery residents when we say, hey, Montgomery residents, we've got to pay for $15 million of infrastructure, water infrastructure in Boulder Hill.
Drop the Montgomery resident. How about Montgomery water customer? Because they're all Montgomery water customers. They're not Montgomery residents. We're all, myself and the people that live in Boulder Hill are all Montgomery water customers. We, yes, we are residents and we pay taxes for a different thing. We are all water customers of the same water system. Their address just happens to be over there and mine happens to be here and somebody else's is downtown. But we're all members of the same water system. We're not, forget resident because it has nothing to do with the water system.
I, I see what you're saying, but I think a lot of Montgomery residents are going to see it the way that I see it.
Well, that's our job to educate them.
I agree with what you're saying, Steve. I think it is going to be a little bit of a tough sell because look at the, the questions we get about tax bills. When, you know, we all have been, had our ear chewed off about, oh, our taxes are so high here and it's, we're, the village of Montgomery is getting such a small amount. So to, to explain this, that it is a whole system, it, it's going to be a tough sell. I agree with you. And again, we get people in Boulder Hill who say, I live in Montgomery and, you know, they're unincorporated. No, they're not really within our, our corporate boundaries. So yeah, there's going to be confusion and there's going to be people, people who won't get it. And there certainly will be people who are angry and say, absolutely, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to pay it because I live in the corporate boundaries. So I understand what you're saying.
It seems like a pretty, and that's why we have marketing now so we can work on the message, but, and messaging is key in, in everything, especially in this. This is going to be an eight year project and it's going to be totally revamping what we do. But that the village has a policy that we don't charge back water main replacement work that we do to your subdivision only. It's charged back to the entire system.
What about the flood plain work that we're doing back off Alcott and Countryside and that whole area? Is Countryside picking up the cap for that?
The flood work that we're doing is part, is part of the TIF to, to be able to accommodate economic development along Alcett.
Continue the road through, but I, okay, but it's unincorporated area. So are those residents paying more for it? Are we asking them to pitch in and?
But it's making the property that's within Montgomery more developable, correct? And within the TIF.
I mean, you could look at it that way. We're not getting Lake Michigan water without fixing any issue in Boulder Hill.
I mean, you could track this down to the nth degree. I mean, you could track this down to the nth degree. I have neighbors that don't have kids in a school district. Why are they paying for kids to go to school? I don't ride the train. My taxes, my state taxes pay for this rail system. You know, I pay for public transportation. I've, I've ridden public transportation twice in my life. But I still pay for it because it's part of being in a community. And in this case, we have a water system. Not, it's not limited to our residents. Everybody is on that system. We're all connected. And again, it's, it's on us to educate people, just like I have to have that conversation about, look at your tax bill. Look at what the school district gets. Look at what we get. And then they look, oh my God, I had no idea. Exactly. But again, it's, it's part of what we do as sitting here is educating people about, it's got nothing to do with residency. It's got to do with, we are a part of the system. We're all part of that system, just like comm ed, just like the school districts, library districts. We're all part of that system and it's just intertwined.
So, we're, we're going into a situation where we've gone to monthly billing on water, right? We know that in two thousand twenty-two, our water bill's going up a little and it's going to continue to go up a little bit until it basically doubles in two thousand thirty. And that's just the, the hundred and whatever million dollars that it takes to get water from the DePage Water Commission. Now we're looking at, okay, we've got these infrastructure, water infrastructure improvements, which is gonna add what? Another potentially forty, fifty bucks?
Well, those were calculated into the decision matrix.
That's part of the-
Right, all of this, even doing the, the work in and out of town was, still made this our most cost effective route to do this. And maybe just to bring it all back and summarize, and I totally get your point too, right? You, you answer to eighteen, twenty thousand people, okay? But, oh, sorry.
I, I just love the honesty.
I lost it. I was trying to summarize, but I guess, we can agree to disagree on it, at least for now. And we'll certainly, we'll come back to it. I mean, the other aspect of it too is with, you know, Kendall County's focus on this area too. And it's important to them and, and in supporting how we treat the, our customers that live in that subdivision. But this is gonna come back before us to consider. If anybody has any additional questions, ask, you know, Pete can-
I, I have a question, actually, it has nothing to do with that part.
Oh, yeah, mine's for questions too.
Because I thought you had questions.
I do.
Do you want me to go first?
Go first.
Okay. So I think mine's fairly easy. When you talked about these cast iron pipes, that's the material that would still be used to replace the pipes, correct?
Currently, what we would recommend using, which the material we have been using is, is a variant of cast iron. It's ductile iron pipe. It's more resilient. It also has a cement lining on it, so it doesn't have the corrosion problems that unlined pipe has.
And that was my follow-up question is, had the, the pipes way back when been lined? Is that the material or would it have been the lead? Because we just went through all that lead removal.
The lead service lines, there's none in Boulder Hill, so that's a non-issue. It's the unlined, you know, pipe in Boulder Hill that's been giving us the most main breaks. However, we still have main breaks in Boulder Hill and line pipe as well. So it's not like it's universal, but we see just a higher percentage of the unlined pipe. And honestly, I don't know how much unlined pipe we have in the village, to be quite honest. Our inventories are pretty good in Boulder Hill. All, obviously, all of the pipe that went in since ninety-eight, we have excellent records of. But some of the earlier pipe materials, we don't have the best records of. You know, we'll continue to build our database. We did put in, as part of the non, well, as part of the submittal to IDNR, we did catalog to the best of our ability, all of the age of the pipe that we do have in the village. So I, I sat down with Director Wolf to go through, you know, the ages, relative ages within, you know, five to ten years and got that all catalogued. But we don't have, you know, absolute perfect records of all the materials that went in. But I would say, I know for a fact, anything that went in west of Orchard during the, you know, the nineteen ninety-eight and beyond developments is all ductile iron, cement lined pipe, class fifty-two, so.
And with the replacement of the lead, what are we calling them?
Lead service lines.
Lead service lines. Am, am I mixing things up? Is that something separate?
It's two separate items. But the lead service lines are important. That was a health risk that, you know, was mitigated when we replaced all the lead service lines in the village, which were approximately, I think, a hundred and ten lead service lines. But the mains that they connected to were cast or ductile iron.
Okay, thank you. I just needed clarification.
The service line takes it from the main in the street to your house.
So, when we replaced the lead service lines, what did we replace them with?
Copper or polyethylene.
Okay, thank you.
We generally prefer to use type K copper, but there were some, because we had some slabs that were difficult to get access to the central part of the building, we did use some plastic pipe, which was approved, is in the plumbing code. So it's not like an unusual type of material. It's just that we generally have used type K copper in the Village of Montgomery. And all of our new construction will be type K.
So, just to kind of help you envision in your mind. So cast iron pipe, if you take a big hammer and you hit it, it cracks. Ductile iron pipe, if you take a big hammer and you hit it, the hammer bounces off and hits you in the forehead. That's the difference. So, the cast iron pipe, when it's in the ground and the ground moves, be it frost or freezing, or if it gets really dry, it's not, it's not tolerant of that movement and it cracks. When we did the water main replacement in Boulder Hill, there was actually, and you have to understand, when that subdivision was built, whatever deal they got on materials is, is what they used. It was all about cost. And we actually replaced a water main on one street and there was unlined cast iron. And then it changed to cast iron lined and then changed to ductile lined. All, all on one street. So that's just, that's just what they, you know, that's just the best deal they got on the pipe that day. And that's what they threw in the ground. So that's, that's what we deal with in Boulder Hill. There was really, there was no backfilling requirements back then. It was, you dig a hole, you throw the pipe in. Wherever you dug out a hole, you put back in. So the pipe would, could be sitting on large rocks or large rocks be sitting on top of the pipe. And then as the ground moved, that made a, a point of impact and it would crack the pipe. So, there were no real standards.
And that would explain why, why we have so many main breaks in that area because of-
Right, because of the cast iron, yeah. So it's, yeah. And conversely, I mean, we had, it wasn't a break, but we had a leak on the main right, right away by my house. And there's another issue and that obviously is ductile cement line. But there's what's called a stray current issue. And that's why there's a big push in the industry to get the electricians to quit grounding to the, to the plumbing in the house. Because if you have something happening in your house that's pushing a stray current back, that stray current goes out, it hits the water main and then it finds some place to disperse. And typically it's one spot. And it will sit there and literally eat a hole in a, in a ductile pipe. So, that's, that's why you see some types of leaks out west where there's ductile cement lined pipe is because of stray currents. So that's a whole nother topic, topic, but it's out there.
A bonus lesson.
Just, just for clarification purposes, I, yes, now I understand the twenty-four million for the proposed water main replacements is part of that one hundred million. I thought it was in addition to. So, okay, thank you.
And so, and I'll skip my detailed questions. I'll, I'll get to them later. But this is what I was gonna say before and it really tags under that. It, I hope that it was a very interesting conversation when Don Dice came in to the village and wanted to buy water. And I hope they had a really great conversation. But if we could go back and this board, let's say, could revisit that seventy years later, I think everybody would agree we might do it differently. At least with some formal agreement, this and that. So, but that's the cards that were dealt and we have to kind of deal with that and work, so. All right, anything else on, on the presentation? Pete, was this your last slide?
It is. The last one is, questions or comments?
Ah, jump the gun.
So I, I do have one more question. I, and, you know, just going back to the Boulder Hill water main replacement, that was a three-year project. The first year, we had two different contractors out there. We're talking about replacing a lot of pipe in eight years. I mean, we're gonna be able to do it, you think?
Well, so that, that's a whole, you know, different discussion that probably needs to, to be discussed. But one thing we talked about internally was we prefer to keep the project packages to about three million dollars because we think most of, you know, because when we went to a larger project in Boulder Hill, contractors had to team with each other. So we had, if one of the contractor teams was Conley and Superior. I think they did a great job, but we'd like to be able to have a lot of local contractors the opportunity to build these water main replacements. So we're, our strategy was, you know, to try to put these into packets that could be bid by, not the big contractors, but the more like the superior performance, you know, Conleys of the world. We think we get better pricing. We definitely get, what we believe, we get better customer service and I think it's better for everybody. And then we probably, you know, also separate, like if we did in one year, if we did a project, you know, a series of projects in the village and a series of projects in Boulder Hill, we probably have two separate contracts. Again, to encourage other contractors be able to bid so we can get the best prices. And we would try to put this out similar like we do for our road program where we would get it out in February so that we attract the contractors, you know, early, get it on their slate, get our best prices. Right now, there's a definite bump here in, in the, you know, the road, right? We just were notified that, you know, ductile iron is almost a thirty-week lead time right now. You know, that's the report now. We understand that, you know, the manufacturers are ramping up production, things like that. But that's the conditions we're at now. We're gonna also have that discussion with the village because we're looking at, you know, do, is it, is it worthwhile to start pre-ordering pipe? You know, when you think about it, it sounds like a great idea, but then we have to have a yard to put it in. It's not just pipe. We have to have fire hydrants. We have to have valves. We have to have fittings, you know, gaskets, bolts. I mean, it, it starts to get to a point where it may not be the best investment for, for us. So we'll look at it, but we're also going to just have to factor in longer completion times in our projects. We want to get good bids. There's probably gonna have to be inflation clauses in the contracts that allow some protection for the, the contractors, which will protect us as well. Because if we don't put those in, they'll just up the amount that they bid the project to compensate for anyway. And I'd rather, if inflation doesn't hit and if, if the supply chain catches up, I'd rather not have to pay for it if, if it's not a real issue. So there's a lot of items that we'll be working with Director Wolf on to, to come up with strategies to try to bid things as best we can. You know, we'll see, River Street will be a good test case to see how things go. But it's, you know, very likely that we'll be looking at a, a later, we were already looking at a project after Montgomery Fest, but it could, you know, go into spring of next year. Not sure, so.
The good thing is that we can do that, right? We're not in a position where we're obligated to do something or we need it, absolutely need it for something.
Right, right. But then this is the other reason why we want to start getting things going with our replacement program because, you know, we, the sooner we start, the sooner we get the benefits of, of getting this pipe replaced.
Also, if we bid it out and it's awful, we just don't have to do it right now. It's not like some of the other scenarios we've been in where we're knee deep, you know?
Yeah, we have flexibility for sure.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Anything new or unfinished? We didn't talk about?
One quick item. Just wanted to remind everyone up in the, by the, what are we calling that area? Up on the side. Up by the, the counter, there, little annex area, there are posters on display from fourth and fifth graders from Krug and Nicholson. That was a contest that the Rotary Club of Montgomery held for the kids. And I think there's probably eight or ten different samples up there. I believe those are all the winners. I can't remember now. But it was fourth and fifth graders. So if you get a chance, take a look. And I don't know how long we get to keep them up there, but thank you to the village for lending the tripods and the area to display them. That's it.
Is that in the Trustee Youngerman Arboretum area?
Just gonna say we should name that, but not that.
I have one.
How about the room next to the counter? How about that?
Go ahead, Steve.
Last year I brought up the village speed limit discussion. I thought we were gonna have it last year. Now we're into April. I think we were waiting for some additional information or some studies or something. When can we have that conversation?
Talking about village-wide speed?